Well, welcome everyone here today for the Public Safety Committee talking about risk assessment and health assessment for firefighters that due to their job and what they face in the field could increase health risks to themselves. This was brought to my attention when a staff member at City Hall attended the presentation that Mr. Ryan, we're going to hear from later, presented back in April. And ever since then, she was telling me about how powerful his statement was and the information that he provided. And so I wanted to hear firsthand from Mark about his experience, his story, and just an educational benefit for me as the Chair of Public Safety to assess what the risks are in the field. So I appreciate, Mark, you taking the time and certainly appreciate the support of Local 67, the Firefighters Union. And we have Joe Richard here who's the new president. Joe, let me officially on the record congratulate you on being the new president of the union. And the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. Again, my name is Joe Richard. I'm president of Columbus Firefighters Local 67. And I want to extend a thank you to Councilman Klein for us having this opportunity to speak today. So on behalf of the 1,545-plus members of Columbus Division of Fire and Local 67, again, I would like to extend a thank you to Councilman Zeit Klein for holding this important public hearing that we have here today. Additionally, I would like to thank firefighter Mark Ryan for his tireless work in cancer awareness and education in the fire service community. While it's never been a secret that being a firefighter is both a tough and dangerous job, and it took the tragic event of 9/11 to bring forth the conversation of health and safety in the fire service to the forefront. We've seen improvements throughout in our turnout gears, SCBA's, apparatus and equipment, and we've made changes in firefighting tactics. The way we put out fires, how we communicate, and even how we respond. But the one conversation that we keep avoiding is the health of our members. The risks that firefighters face today are substantially different than those of generations before us. And while we still face the dangers of our forefathers, such as burns, falls, and even building collapse, there's even a greater danger out there today, and that's the many different occupational cancer dangers. The use of synthetic materials and chemical compounds in homes, furniture, and even in clothing, they all create a toxic cocktail of smoke and gases when exposed to fire. This toxic cocktail is creating a significant impact on our members' lives. We are seeing epidemic numbers of cancer cases and other occupational illnesses well beyond those of the general public. Our members were now fighting this head-on, and we are educating ourselves, educating our employers, and of course, we are educating our lawmakers. We are making the push to recognize that occupational diseases at the state level and as well as the international level, and we are making this push to recognize that these occupational diseases are there so that our members don't have to fight this alone. So Councilman, we look forward to working with City Council. We look forward to working with the Director, the Fire Chief, and the city administration as we move forward in fighting this head-on. And we want to make sure that we fight it for the health and wellness and well-being of all of our firefighters. So for that, we thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. As with any other hearing, this is open to the public, will accept speaker slips. They're right here. They're blue. They say speaker slip on them. So if you are interested in commenting at the end of the hearing, you're more than welcome to. Just please give those to Gina or Gretchen who's sitting to my right. And at this time, I'd like to invite up Mark. Mark, again, thank you for taking the time to give this presentation. I know, like I said in the opening statement, that you did this in April to someone who helps me out at City Hall, and she was inspired and told me about it. And over the course of the months, we're finally able to get this hearing scheduled, and I'm excited and eager to hear about what you have to say and apologize for the delay of, I know, being in April and now it's October. But I think it's important, and I didn't want it to get off the radar screen because of just how important this is to our community and to the folks to put their lives on the line fighting fires and to make sure that we're safe as a community. The floor is yours.
I want to thank you for having me in. I want to thank President Richards for continuing his support and allowing me to do this. I honestly have no idea what happened to our audio visual here. Do you guys have any idea why I lost my screen?
No.
And Grant has disappeared. Okay.
Well, while we're waiting on this, can you maybe tell us a little bit about you and who brought you to give this presentation?
And I'll get into some of this in the presentation as to my background and why I'm here, but going through my experience, I knew after experiencing what I had gone through, that this was a very uneducated area in the fire service, stuff we had no idea about. And here I am, a younger guy who's active, who's working at stations who are constantly training. We're in one of the biggest training departments in the country, and yet we know nothing. So it became a passion of mine to educate everybody and then trying to find a way to do it and deliver in a way that firemen would accept it. That's always one of the largest challenges. Every week, I'm in a different department with different guys who function different ways, who act certain ways. So it was very imperative that I created a class that would speak to all firemen, not just Columbus firemen, but all firemen, whether your career or volunteer. And so that's really just how my passion began.
And you do this across the state?
Across the state of Ohio.
Okay.
Yep.
I think you have your audio visual.
Perfect. Awesome. I start out every class with this video, and really, this video is good, firemen or not, because it gives you a little glimpse of what we see and what is happening currently right now.
... rises until suddenly, everything is burning.
We have developed a method for applying a flame retardant in the home.
Every American home has flame retardants in their couch. These are chemicals measured by pounds and ounces.
Flame retardants accumulate in people and wildlife in places around the world.
And they're toxic.
And building up in breast milk.
And being passed on to the next generation.
We are in the middle of a giant, uncontrolled experiment on American children.
Why do we have these chemicals in our lives? Why do we have them in our furniture? Why do we have them in our bodies?
Flame retardants are important to save lives. We already have the highest fire safety standard.
This study is so obscure, we had to translate it into English. The industry doesn't have a copy. You can't find it online. We had to go to the National Library of Sweden to get a copy.
If the science shows these chemicals don't really even work, why are we getting the potential risk and none of the benefit?
These fires now are just an absolute toxic soup.
I had transitional cell carcinoma, a rare form of cancer found in people in the chemical industry.
I've had coworkers die in fires, and I've had a lot more die of cancer.
I had all these chemicals in my bodies, including flame retardants. Folks said, "We need a legislator willing to take on a fight against the chemical industry." And I was like, "Let's go for it."
Health advocates and the chemical industry are facing off in Washington.
I had no clue kind of opposition we were going to be facing.
There was a campaign of marketing and deception.
We've brought the signatures of 130,000 Americans with us.
Regular people stood up and said, "Look, we don't want to take it anymore."
You don't let the fire win. We win.
Multiple reasons why I show this video. A, it's a very well-done documentary. The man at the end, his name is Tony Stephanie, and as you heard in the video, he developed a very rare form of cancer. It was a form of cancer never seen in the fire service before, and it was really what spurred his interest in how did he get cancer, which was one of the questions I never wanted to ask myself, but I always end up, you always get back there when you're a cancer patient. How did this occur? How did this happen? So after watching him and seeing his documentary, it then spurred my interest. Now, another thing that has come from that documentary are two small experiments. A doctor named Susan Shaw decided she wanted to go out west and perform an experiment of her own, and really, what we're looking for is exposure time. What is the effect? How fast does it occur? Well, she went out there, received permission to follow around 12 firemen, and basically perform an experiment once they have been inside of an exposure. So after a few weeks of following them around, they caught a working fire. All 12 guys were inside, little more than 20 minutes, which is about the use of an SCBA bottle, full gear. As they exited the scene, she performed blood draws right on the scene. She took the blood, went to the lab space she was renting, and what she found out was is that from that one exposure, one exposure, 20 minutes long, toxins and carcinogens are already three times the normal levels inside their bloodstream. One exposure. Now, the second thing that has just come to us from last spring is out of Chicago. And Chicago was looking for one specific chemical, and that was benzene. You guys are going to learn a little bit about benzene today. But what they were doing is as their men would exit the hot zone, or what we would call the fire zone, they would doff their gear, leave it in a cold area. The men would rest in a separate cold area, and they'd both stay there for a period of 25 minutes. After 25 minutes, the gear would be tested for off-gas, which they found that it was still putting off five times the normal limit of benzene after 25 minutes of rest in a cold area ventilated. The men were still putting off two times the amount off their breath. Full gear, SCBA's, one exposure. Now, the reason this is so important to us is because as we go out and educate our community and our members and our firefighters, they have to understand, it's not 20 years, it's not 25 years, it's not 30 years. Each exposure is deadly. Because at the end of the day in this class, you're going to learn a few things, and they learn a few things. They learn what's occurring, how their body's reacting, what they're facing, and what they need to do to prevent it. See, the nice part about all this is even in cancer and the fire service, we have a solution. It's just up until this point, we didn't know what that solution was. So as we go through this entire class, I understand not everybody in here are members of the fire service, you're going to understand that there is a problem. We know what's going on, but we do have a solution. We just need to get everybody understanding it. And at the same time, even with that problem and solution, that's why we all need to work together to create a good, safe place for all of our firefighters. So the class is very simply titled, "It's Firefighters and Cancer." Become my mission in life. It's a passion. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Mark Ryan. I'm 33 years old. I will be 34 in seven days. I'm married with five children from the ages of 15 to three, soon to be 16 to four, and I am a firefighter paramedic in the city of Columbus since 2006. I no longer ride on a fire truck. I now hold a new position. I am the Executive Assistant to the Columbus Firefighter Union Local 67 President, Mr. Joe Richards. I'm very thankful to have that position. It allows me to do lots of things. Obviously, if president needs something, I take care of it. But with his leadership and with his guidance, he allows me to travel all over the state of Ohio, educating the members of Ohio's fire departments. I'm very fortunate to be able to do that. I am also the Assistant Director of Ohio for the Firefighter Cancer Support Network. The nice thing about the Cancer Support Network is it's a 100% nonprofit, and all it is is firefighters supporting firefighters. Nobody makes any money. Nobody gets paid. If a firefighter or family member comes down with cancer, our job is to educate them, help them, offer, whether it be new treatment facilities, doctors, whatever that family or they themselves might need, that's what we're there for. September 11th, as we already discussed here, is a very important date in the fire service, and everybody in here knows what happened on September 11th. But even more important to my family and myself is September 11, 2012. My wife and I were having multiple arguments for about a month, and every day, she would stop me and say, "Honey, did you see that spot on your back? Honey, did you notice that spot on your back keeps changing?" And every single day was a new comment. And every single day, I would tell her, "Honey, I'm fine. 30 years old, great shape. Why am I worried about a spot? Everybody gets age spots. I feel great. I'm not going to worry about it. I'm definitely not going to the doctor. I spend every day at the doctor at work." So after about a month, and obviously, her consistent pestering, I told her, I said, "Babe, if you want me to go to a doctor," I said, "here's how this is going to work. You're going to find the doctor, you're going to make the appointment, and you're going to make sure it's not on one of my workdays, because I'm not skipping work to go to see no doctor." So she did. Very persistent woman. And here I am, September 11, 2012, walking into my doctor's office for the very first time. And as we're walking down the hallway, we're having a conversation. I'm explaining how my wife's a nurse, and she thinks she sees something, but I feel great, nothing's going on. The doctor said, "Let's get into the room. We'll see what's going on. We'll remove your shirt, we'll check things out." I said, "That's all I want to hear." Walk into the room, I remove my shirt, and I turn around to show him this spot. It wasn't a matter of 10 seconds, the doctor politely excused himself from the room. No exaggeration. So as I'm in this room, pacing back and forth, wondering to myself, "What did this doctor just see in what's about to occur in my life?" My mind is just going crazy. 10 minutes later, he walks in the room, and he just hands me a card. And the card says, "The Ohio State University, James Cancer Institute, Dr. Kari Kendra." I said, "Doc," I said, "what's going on?" He said, "You have melanoma." I said, "You're sure?" He said, "I'm positive." I said, "How bad is this?" He said, "I don't know." I said, "So how does this work?" I said, "Do I call them? Do we do scans? Do we do blood work? You know, what's the next step?" He said, "I don't know." He said, "They're waiting for you." He said, "I just got off the phone with the doctors. You need to leave right now." I said, "It's that serious?" He said, "Mark, it's that serious." So as I'm leaving that doctor's office, as you can imagine, I'm making every phone call possible, calling my wife, giving her the bad news, telling her, "You need to meet me here. Your husband's not real bright. I should have listened to you a month ago, but this is what's going on." And as we pulled into the James that day, and we're sitting there with multiple doctors, every single one of them trying to figure out the same thing. How bad is the cancer? How far has it spread? And what do we need to do next? Well, within two weeks, I was in my first major surgery, and they removed two large chunks from my back, and I do mean chunks. See, skin cancer is all about depth, and the deeper they would go, the more cancer they'd find. The deeper they go, more cancer they'd find. And eventually, after two hours of surgery, they decided, "We're not going to find the end of this cancer. We need to start looking elsewhere." So they went underneath my right arm and started pulling biopsies of my lymph nodes. Two and a half hours later, they walked out into the waiting room, and there was my father and my wife, and they're explaining to them what happened, the process. The doctor said, "You know, we got him down. Once we get him up, we'll go ahead and let you take him home, let him relax, let him recover. We'll call you in a week, let you know what we found out." So here I am at home, resting, trying to heal. A week later, my phone rings, and I answer the phone, and it didn't matter how slick I was or how many different ways I would ask the doctor the question, she would just repeat the same thing over and over. "Mark, I need to see you in my office." "Mark, you need to come see me right now." Now, being me the paramedic, my wife being a nurse, we knew what that meant. As we drove into the James again, my wife very emotional, we were bracing for more bad news. And more bad news is what came. Doctor looked across the table and said, "Mark, we failed. We didn't get it all. We got to do this again." Two more weeks go by, I'm in my second major surgery. This time, they go under my right arm, and they took everything. Now, I'm here to tell you, your lymph nodes are quite small. The purpose they have in your body is quite large, but getting them out is quite an extensive surgery. I lost use of my right arm for a solid month. Multiple drains hanging out of me. Every single day was a doctor's appointment. Every single day was a treatment plan. Every single day was more tests, because we still didn't know had we succeeded at that point in time. Now, every single day, all the doctors wanted to talk about was treatment and where to go to next. All I wanted to talk about was getting healthy and getting back to being a firefighter. That was always my number-one goal. That's what drove me every single day. And eventually, I did. Eventually, I got myself healthy, able, permission from Dr. and officers to let me back on the truck. The problem is, it didn't last very long. After four months of being back on the truck, my blood counts were plummeting, my internal organs began to fail. You've got to remember, this entire time, I was taking chemo every other day while working as a Columbus fireman, because that's what I wanted to do. That was my number-one therapy. That's where I could hide and not be a cancer patient, but be a fireman. But what it did is then it put me back in the hospital. Nine days. Emergency gallbladder surgery. It was so infected with the cancer. And while I was in the hospital, I ended up losing use of my left leg. I could feel it, but I couldn't move it. And every time the doctors went to move it, it was excruciatingly painful. The cancer they thought they had, they didn't. The cancer had now moved to my spine. There was a tumor on the sacrum, the lower base of my spine, that had grown around the nerves that control my left leg. And unfortunately for me, you'll notice I don't stand anywhere for a very long period of time. That tumor's still there. It's been deemed inoperable. I also have a secondary tumor midway up my spine, and the newest one is in my right lower lobe of my lung. That's the part of cancer that you can't control. You're not in control of it. There is no cure for melanoma. You guys are going to learn how important these stats are today, because you're going to see the effect of not just my cancer, but many other cancers, and the percentage in which they're affecting firefighters all over the state of Ohio. Same firefighters are doing what I'm doing every day, same firefighters with families who are dealing with what my family deals with every single day. I put this picture in my presentation as I travel. Reason being is because as a firefighter, family is extremely important to us. We are a family. Now, when I originally started, I took it with me because I don't like going anywhere without my wife and children. And I travel so much, I always like to have that remembered. It's my motivation. And the fact is, I'm not ashamed to tell anybody in this room, I need motivation every single day when I wake up. Every single day, it's find that positive for the next day. Find what I'm going to do today. What is my mission? Don't let cancer get me down. That's my photo. That's my motivation. But what it was is one night, driving from a little town called Calida, Ohio, and the entire Putnam County is almost all volunteer firemen. I have 100 people. They had to move the presentation a half hour before, because so many people showed up. We had to move it to the high school auditorium. And here I am, driving back two and a half hours. It's downpour rain. I'm thinking to myself, "Why am I doing this? My body hurts. I don't feel good. Why am I doing this?" And very quickly, I thought of this picture. And very quickly, I thought of all the firefighters in the state of Ohio and all their families. And I realized I would never, ever want any of them, whether I'm friends with them, I don't know them, and I haven't met them yet. I don't want their family to go through what my family does on a regular basis. That's my sacrifice. And I keep that up there, because that's what reminds me of all these other guys that I don't want to go through this, and that's what keeps pushing me with this message. For the guys in here who are firemen, they're going to know what I'm talking about. For those of you who aren't firemen, I'll expound on this a little bit. We call this not our Father's Fire Department. President Richards touched on this a little bit. Over time, everything evolves. Everything evolves. And what we've really noticed in the fire service is not only do we evolve, we're very good at that, especially here in the city of Columbus. We are constantly training the new tactics, the new ways and styles to stay safe and be more efficient. But even with that, it is very difficult to stay caught up on building materials, building construction, and fire load. And fire load is very simply put, it's what we have inside our home. It's very difficult to catch up, and as you saw in that video, it's even harder to investigate it. They actually had to go to Sweden to get the list of the chemicals that are being used in modern-day fire retardants, to have it translated, to understand what they are and what we're doing and what we're facing. And then on a bigger expanse, on how do they affect us? That is the challenge we're facing every single day. And even though over time, we have evolved our tactics, and we have evolved the way we fight fire, it's very difficult to evolve the way the exposure affects us. That's what we're attempting to do right now. So even with all that changing, there is still change that has to occur, because the amount of unknowns are the amount of unknowns that have never been seen before. We have no idea what is inside these vehicles, these cars, toys, carpets, clothing, furniture. The way you build a house now, even as you drive down Old German Village, the homes all look the same, but as we all know, all of them have been remodeled. All of them have been gutted, all of them have changed. It's all new-age stuff. Those effects then completely change, and that so is ours exposure, and that changes how it affects us. Now, this is a little history lesson on to how the fire department has evolved with medical and illness and safety and health. As you notice, in 1967 is when the United States first recognized heart and lung issues in the fire service. And over a period of nine years, every state in the United States adopted a Heart and Lung Presumptive Act. Every firefighter that works in the state of Ohio is covered under that. If they're to get heart disease or lung disease, they will be covered, and it is presumed it occurred because of their job. It took nine years. We're very fortunate to have it, and we are very happy to have it. Now, in 1982, California said, "You're absolutely correct. We do have heart and lung issues, but we also notice we have a very high rate of cancer in our fire service." So in 1982, over 30 years ago, California adopted the very first Heart Presumption Act, or I'm sorry, Cancer Presumption Act, and it is still set in place. Over 30 years ago, cancer was recognized. Now, in 1992, doctors, Dr. Howe and Dr. Birch, they said, "Well, if cancer is so prevalent in the fire service, what's causing it and what cancers are having the greatest effect?" So they did the very first firefighter-specific cancer study in 1990, over 20 years ago. 30 years ago, we had recognition, state law. 20 years ago, we had doctors backing it. They were able to come up with four cancers that are specifically affecting firefighters with their technology and their science over 20 years ago. We've known about this a long time. Now, one of the biggest changes in the fire service is for years, we have always set our priority on heart and lung. And for years, we were right. But as I talked to you about earlier, as we evolve, things change. We have set such a precedence on the importance of heart and lung, we've seen those numbers go way down, the way SCBA's work, the way we function on a fire ground. We're not losing members to heart and lung like we used to. We are now losing members to cancer. As you can see, from 2010 to 2012, more firefighters were diagnosed with cancer than the previous 10 years combined. The latest stats are saying that one out of every three firemen will be diagnosed with cancer at one point in time in their life. The latest numbers that come directly from the International is telling us that 56% of all line-of-duty deaths are as a result of cancer, over half. Now, as devastating as these numbers are to people like us, and as hard as they are for you to hear, those numbers are only going to continue to rise. Currently, right now, even out of the 35 states that have cancer presumption law, not all those states even recognize cancer as an LOD, line-of-duty death. So until everybody is recognized as line-of-duty death, you're going to see those numbers still remain the same. Once they recognize, those numbers are going to skyrocket. These numbers here are a comparison to prove the point in the evolution of heart to cancer and how the change has been made. You'll see from 2010, cancer almost doubled, nine more in 11, almost doubled again in 2012. These are line-of-duty deaths, IAFF stats, directly from the IAFF. Now, you'll see down here, the 10-year comparison. In 93 to '03, we had 40 cardiac deaths, 31 cancer deaths. Now, the very next 10 years, our cardiac deaths did triple, and our cancer deaths are almost 10 times the amount. Now, there's a very good reason for this. This goes back to what I was talking on earlier. You guys will hear me use the word "evolve" all the time, because that is what happens every single day. Construction constantly evolves. And we know that in the late 90s is when construction code and building code completely changed, and the way we did things, and the way we manufactured, and the way we functioned changed. And we are now seeing the result. See, as I teach a class, I tell all the firemen, "We're not going to talk to you about the way you fight fire. The way Ohio's firefighters fight fire is excellent. It's efficient, and it works. We're very good at our job. But what we're not doing is we're not taking care of ourselves after the fire is out." That's where the problem is happening. That's where we have not evolved, and we're seeing the result right here. And as you see too, that asterisk, all those deaths are prior to the age of 60. We're not talking about old men. We're not talking about guys at the end of their career. 60 is just the latest. I can tell you personally, right here, and every man in this room could tell you right here, this winter, we buried one of our own. He was only 32 years old. Died from melanoma, had a four-year-old, and a two-year-old, and a very young wife.
Let me understand, the cardiac number, what does that mean? Does that mean that you suffer a heart attack while on duty, or just as a firefighter? What does that mean?
Line-of-duty death on duty.
Okay.
Correct.
Because clearly, cancer isn't going to kill you instantaneously like a cardiac arrest will. That's what I'm just trying to understand.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. But when you do the, when you, when you break that down to a line of duty death, you do have states, 32 states that recognize cancer as a line of duty death, and that's how you get that comparison. So the cancer was recognized and presumed that it occurred for that firefighter while on duty.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So that's how that comparison is made.
Okay.
Cardiac arrest, cardiac disease, so on so forth.
Then the cardiac 167, is that total across the United States? Or is that just in those 32 states?
These are the only 32 states, I only, that way I didn't have skewed numbers. Only the states that report got compared.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep. Now, these numbers here are directly from United Healthcare, which is Columbus Fire's provider. Okay? These numbers come directly from them in a three-year comparison. They have all, they save all the data, and it is only firefighter numbers. As you guys will see here, it's a three-year comparison. City of Columbus during those years averaged 822,000 population. During the same three years, they had 4,669 known cancer cases. Those numbers come directly from the Ohio Department of Health, which keeps track of all cancer, all cancer cases in the city of Columbus. That is one out of every 176 persons. Columbus Division of Fire, during the same three years, we have 1,551 employees, 108 known cancer cases. That is one out of every 14 Columbus firemen are battling and dealing with cancer. Now, another way to look at that, we all know we have a lot of stations. That is one firefighter at every fire station, on every unit, and then some, dealing with cancer. In one form or another. Now, I go to a lot of places, and you know what? There's a great myth out there that Columbus is our own entity, and nobody could ever touch Columbus Division of Fire, and it's just an us thing. I'm here to tell you, Violet Township, Pickerington, Ohio, their cancer number is one out of every 5.3. Orange County up in Delaware, one out of every eight. Cleveland, one out of every 10. Lancaster, one out of every 12. The numbers are across the board in the state. We have very, very high rates of cancer. And it's really occurring. And you guys will see these 108 known cancer cases. I'm here to tell you, at the end of this year, we go reevaluate those, that number will be much higher. And there's a reason for that. It's not just because things have changed so much, but now with the amount of education, once again, we're going to see these numbers spike because now everybody's taking it serious and getting evaluated. But that's where we are with these numbers. Any questions here? Now, what is facing, what is happening? This is where we get to the educational part for our firefighters. What's really occurring? Now, I put together a most wanted list, and there's a very good reason for that. I wanted them to understand what exactly are they going to see on a daily basis. And in the top five, I wanted them to know what they're going to see the most consistent. Number one is benzene, number two is formaldehyde, number three is soot, number four is diesel fumes, and number five, we are on our own most top five wanted list. And I tell every classroom, there's a reason. We have to accept ownership at some point in time. If we do not accept ownership, then we will continue to fail. But until we accept ownership, our actions will remain in the top five most wanted list because we are allowing these chemicals to have an effect on us. If we make change, if we make change, simple habitual changes to our everyday life at work, we get to nullify the effects of these chemicals. And I really press that point in every classroom, because it's not about who's going to take care of us, it's how can we take care of ourselves? Just a quick background on these. Benzene is a top 20 most-used chemical in the United States of America. Now, that's pretty impressive when they know for a fact it causes cancer in humans. And it is still a top 20 most-used chemical in America. You're actually sitting on it right now. It's used in the process of making all synthetics and plastics. It is our world. It's your carpet, it's your clothing, it's your mattress, it's your kid's toys, it's everywhere. And when it's burning, it's deadly. This is what we're facing on a regular basis. Now, the International Agency of Research on Cancer, they do smoke studies every year. They like to know the environment we work in, and what is inside this smoke. They tell us that benzene is the second most found chemi, second most found chemical in all smoke studies. So as I tell every class, if there is smoke on the scene, you have benzene in your environment, it causes cancer, and it will kill you. It's that simple. It's invisible and odorless. It's another way for it to get us. Formaldehyde and benzene go hand in hand. Once again, it's used in the process of making all plastics. Once again, it's America, bigger, cheaper, faster now. Everything is synthetic, everything is molded, it's what we do. It's more dangerous than CO and cyanide. No detection device, no smell. It was found in all fire smoke studies. Guys, these aren't maybe it's there, these are chemicals that we are seeing on a regular basis, and we are being affected by. We all know that soot is a part of the fire service, there's no way getting from it. Its number one absorption point is our skin, and it is now a group one carcinogen. But like I tell every class, guys, we are firemen, it's in our genetics. I was born to be a fireman. That's a fact. Soot is a part of the fire service. We don't worry about soot. We worry about what we do after the fire is out, and we nullify the effects of soot. So even though we know it's there, there are things we can do to change that. Diesel fumes are the new one. Diesel fumes are the great unknown. Diesel fumes made it to the big leagues in 2012. Prior to 2012, they didn't know for sure if it caused cancer. We do now know that diesel fumes do cause cancer. The biggest problem with diesel fumes in the fire service, it is really station by station, not even department by department. It's station by station. Each station takes multiple different kinds of runs, how often they run their truck, how often they train, how all that works, exhaust systems, all that is the great unknown. Currently, right now, there's about 10 diesel fume studies going around in the United States, and we're waiting on responses. But the thing to do is educate these guys, be safe, safe practices around it, make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing around diesel fumes. So this is where I get into these guys and explain to them how their bodies reacting, and how their actions change the way these chemicals affect them. The number one thing is, for every five degrees, your body temperature rises, your skin absorption rate goes up 400%. Now, that's very important to us when you consider, we're going inside wearing 60 pounds of gear into an environment that's anywhere from 1,300 to 1,600 degrees Fahrenheit. That is standard operating temperature inside of a working fire. Now, imagine what your body temperature does in an environment like that while you're working full go for 20 minutes straight. Your body temperature is through the roof. And what is occurring? Your skin pores are opening, and you are a walking sponge. The other thing that people don't understand is, is our gear is designed to shed heat. It keeps us safe from heat, it's not a filtration system. If it is in the environment, it makes it through our gear, it latches onto our skin, and you now know, as they now know, their body absorbs everything. That's the biggest culprit. That's the problem. That's what we're facing. This is where they start getting serious about when I ask them to make changes later, because they know what's occurring now. Now, the other big problems that we have in the fire system, and this is what we're changing across the board, this is being made across the state of Ohio, and we're seeing changes every day, we're very happy with this. The removal of PPE. For years, we did not take this seriously. Now, men are wearing all their gear, all the time, no matter what, period. Whether we're being told the scene is safe, it's been deemed safe, it's not. As I talked about those chemicals earlier, they're invisible and they're odorless, there's no way to check for them. We're not taking that risk anymore. We're now wearing our gear all the time, we're taking the utmost respect of this. Another big one is cleaning. For years, we thought we were cleaning our stuff correctly, and what we found out is, a lot of the equipment we use is one-time-use equipment. That doesn't mean one-time throw it away and create cost. It means one time, wash it, replace it until it's been cleaned, and then we use it again. It's another big activity we've been performing. One of the biggest one is the helmets. How many, how many people in here know what a fireman's helmet looked like? You know, you see the videos, and the pic, all black and burn up? Guys, for years, that was the trademark. As a new boy, that's all I wanted to do. And I can tell you, I had a veteran, a 19-year veteran come up to me one day after a class, and he said, I've had 12 cancerous spots removed from my forehead. Said my doctor couldn't figure out what was going on, I had no idea what was going on. 19 years on the fire service, I've never one-time cleaned my helmet. A simple action, something so simple, causing cancer, wiping out the brim of a helmet. And he says, here I am now, I look at my family, I think something so stupid. But these are the simple things that we get to change. Another big one is our truck caps. We do take very good care of our trucks, as you guys know, but it's the nitty-gritty stuff. I call them making a buddy clean, making sure we're taking care of the guy next. Everything's about family, take care of the next guy. Personal hygiene. Now, this is where the biggest change is coming. You see, the number one cause of cancer in the fire service, every report that comes out is going to tell you, the number one cause in the fire service for cancer is multiple exposures after the fire is out. We're not talking about fire operations. We're talking about when you're done, and you've gone back to the station. Number one cause, multiple exposure after the fire is out. We are allowing these chemicals to take a toll on us without us even knowing. That's where the personal hygiene comes in. We have departments in the world that are sharing the same cancer rates the state of Ohio do, which is two times higher cancer rate for their firefighters and general population. They made one simple change. They require a personal decon after each exposure. They've seen their cancer rates fall to zero. That's what our goal is. A personal decon is very simple. Every station in the city of Columbus is established with very hot water and good blood, or in good water pressure. When you come back, you guys take a shower, it's called an uncomfortably warm shower, they turn the temperature up to the spot where they can just barely handle it, their pores reopen, all the surface comes back to the top, and they simply wash it away. This has been going on over in Europe for 20 years, and they've seen great success with this. And it is the same thing that we are going to be doing here in the state of Ohio. These are the things, when I go around, I preach at them, and I tell them, this isn't a list that you get to choose from. This isn't à la carte. I'll take that one, I'll take this one. No, that's not how this works. These together help you understand and help you defeat cancer. But only together. Here are the cancers that we know for a fact are affecting firefighters and at the rate they are affecting them. As you'll notice, testicular cancer is number one, two and a half times greater, or two times greater. Multiple myeloma, non-Hodgkin's, skin cancer, prostate, melanoma, brain, colon, leukemia. And the latest one that came to us is breast cancer in 2013. The breast cancer study was spiked and encouraged because of the amount of men in the fire service who were getting breast cancer. And what we now know is, from 2013, the study that was done in San Francisco, is we are six times greater risk to breast cancer, men or women. But if you see these numbers here, these percentages, 53% higher, 51% higher, 39% higher, and so on so forth, I tell everybody, these are real odds. We're not talking about an illness. These are real odds at death. And you have to say it that way, because they have to walk out of that room knowing how important this is. This is really, really occurring. All this stuff is factual data based on medical studies, not on one man's opinion, but on medical study. Here's another interesting fact, and this is another way I push the guys, especially with being testicular cancer number one, they always want to know, is it just because we're a male-dominated career field? No. The reason that it is number one is because our groin region, even as we sit in this room at normal temperature, has a 300% higher absorption rate than anywhere else in your body. So you add that percentage on top of the 400% for every five degrees of change, that area of your body is soaking in your environment more than anywhere else. That is why testicular cancer is number one. I put the other ones up here because these are the little things that firemen get lazy on. Helmet, mask, hood. The three things that are the easiest for us to clean are the three things we always take for granted. They are your next three highest absorption areas on your body. And currently, in the city of Columbus, out of the 108 cancer cases, 49% of them are skin-related cancers. And out of the 49%, all of them have started from the neck up. So this is where we push this, and these are why these numbers are up here, so they understand why the little things are so important. I remember coming down, just a very quick story, I apologize, but I'll make it quick. When President Reel brought me down to the Union Hall, one of the first things I was doing as down there was creating this class. How do I educate my brothers and sisters? How do I get them to understand what I now know? And a friend of mine emailed me a new medical study. This was the picture that came with it. And I remember when I opened it, I was so emotional. I mean, instantly, it just engulfed me with different emotions. I was angry, I was irritated, I'm like, why this picture? We're talking about cancer in the fire service, we're talking about the things that we don't want to be doing, and this is the picture they gave me. And it's just my way of letting you in on what we see. This is what we've done for years. A tough guy on a ladder, facing fire, breathing in all this smoke, his body's soaking in everything, and he has no idea what's happening. He doesn't know how his body's reacting. I did it for years. Rhine, go pull the eaves. Rhine, go knock that down. Rhine, go do this. Don't even think about it. You react. That's how we're designed. And you don't think what's coming next. And as I stared at this picture, I kept thinking to myself, I wish I knew where this guy worked. I wish I knew what department this is from. I'd like to let him know what's going on, because he has no idea what's next. He doesn't know that one day, he could be sitting with his family, saying I have cancer. Sitting down with my five children, telling them, daddy may only have five years to live. That's my diagnosis. Sitting down with your wife, wondering who's going to walk my daughter down the aisle? Who's going to take my daughter to swim lessons? Who's going to teach my kids how to drive? Who's going to be there for them when they need a strong man, and I'm not anymore? Who's going to love my wife when I'm gone? The way only I can. That's what that gets us. That is why change needs to happen. Because we don't know what's next. I didn't know what was next. And here I am, 33 years old, soon to be 34, stage four. No cure. It's inevitable I will die from cancer. I don't know when. But I know this, if I would have known what I just talked to you about, my life could be completely different. These are the 12 steps to a safer department. These are what we preach, I won't go over all of them. If you would like a copy, I'll gladly give you one. But these are the things that I implement to every station at every department I go to, and this is with a new requirement. This is not a suggestion, this is a requirement. And you'll see in the very last slide here, this is where I come down on them. I explain to them the situation and what they're facing. We know for a fact there are nine group one carcinogens in all fire smoke. Those are nine cancer-causing agents in all fire smoke, fact. And then we go down to the officers. We make sure these officers understand that they need to create an environment that is acceptable to change, that is supportive of change, and they need to create an environment that holds the men accountable for that change. And then lastly, we do touch on what we can expect from cancer presumption law. And let me, on that stance, I don't preach that that's our saving grace. I preach, and everybody that's sat through my classes, that cancer presumption law is not our saving grace. It's not a backup plan. We want it there for recognition to take care of our family members, but we don't want it.